I'd like to begin this meeting of the Board of Education. Please rise for the pledge led by Mrs. Tessa.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, item B, adoption and approval of the agenda.
Second.
All those in favor? Item C, special recognitions and presentations. Mitch Hoffman, our chief business official, will introduce our first presentation.
Yes, this is Nick. We have an update for you regarding our cafeteria fund and the performance for this past year 11-12. And also, he'll be discussing potential changes for 12-13. So, I'd like to introduce Ray DeJaimo, our supervisor of food services. All right.
Profit and loss for 2011-2012. Our total revenue was $2,001,715.23. Total expenses were $1,960,815.56. Per net excess of $40,899.67.
See that direction?
2011-12 goals met. We added more vegetarian options. We did a lot more turkey and chicken. Program ran a positive balance again. And we did fresh fruits and vegetables every day. Changes ahead. Fruits and vegetables are now separate menu components. All children are required to take a fruit and vegetable. K must take 3/4 cup veggie and 1/2 cup fruit. 9-12 must be 1 cup of both fruit and veggie. Whole grains and flour products must give these 51% whole grain. We're ahead of the curve on that. We started out about three years ago. Milk can only serve 1% wide in factory chocolate milk. We're ahead of the curve on that. And the trans fats, we took out about three years ago as well. And there are a lot more rules and regulations. It's about 360 pages of it. If you'd like to see them, I'd be happy to send it to you via email. It's been projected that the average meal price will go up between 26 cents and 40 cents per meal per day. And what we get is 6 cents per meal.
Based on the changes?
Based on all the changes, they're giving us 6 cents. So, what is that? The challenge for next year, because of the new changes to the National School Lunch Program, in order to remain fiscally responsible while still serving high-quality food, we have to take a look at other options when it comes to purchasing. So, purchasing food from larger vendors and from food-buying groups will allow us to purchase quality food and paper products with better prices remaining fiscally responsible. The downside is that purchasing less products from local vendors, who cannot compete with giant vendors anymore. So, especially with fruits and vegetables, there's just no way we can make it happen next year doing more local business because prices are just too high. They can't compete. And we don't want to... We don't want the quality to suffer on other items that we serve. So, it's going to be difficult for local vendors next year. Basically, that's it. Got any questions?
I heard you write that federal government, the 360 pages of guidelines.
Yeah. So, that's going to cost us 25.40 more per meal. But in their philanthropy magnanimous way, they're going to give us 6 cents per meal. 6 cents per meal. And the figures that I got on the 26.40, Steve, who did they come from? You?
Yeah, I know. One of the ones forwarded. Well, it's coming from School Innovations and Apacacy. You know that they dropped that out of Super Presi.
So, Ray, what's going to happen to our $45,000 or $40-something thousand surplus that we had this year? Is that automatically erased?
That's gone.
It's gone. Are we going to be into the red then?
No. We will not allow that to happen. We will not allow that to happen. We've been successful for the last, how many years in the program? Since I think we ran into positive, and I refuse to lose money.
Are we constrained anywhere that we can charge per meal?
Most of our meals are free and reduced.
Like what percentage of free and reduced? Of the participants?
Of the participant?
85%.
That's probably a little high, but probably around 80%.
Of our participants?
Are free?
Well, at certain schools, we have almost 100% participation. But throughout the district, no, we're about 35% total.
No, we're anticipating participating in the menu.
We still have enough. I mean, we have about under $9 of sales. So, that's what we're trying. So, we do have people who pay for the lunches, but it's getting smaller and smaller because of the economy and that more and more people are qualifying for free and reduced stuff more than ever. So... I have a question. For students who choose to buy but aren't on free and reduced, they're not required to take... They are required to take all the food?
Yes. Everybody is required now.
To count the meal.
In fact, it's so difficult now because we do salad bars at all our schools. Salad bars are almost obsolete now because you have to serve this much. And it has to be that exact amount. Where it's easier just to cup it up and give it to them than... Because you can't police the salad bar. Y'all can't find scales on the salad bar for the children to serve. So, what we're going to do next year is we're going to keep the salad bars up as an addition to them. And there's going to be a lot of changes with the vegetables, especially colors. They have to be certain colors for the wheat, certain break counts for the wheat. So, my students can just throw that?
You're talking about very upscale-type things that we feel will probably get cost because kids aren't going to be familiar with them. In certain regions of the country, okra is a big thing. In California...
Is that going to be on the menu because I have a problem with that?
We're talking about things having to be, what, purple veggies? And not just once a month, but like every week? And the cost of consciously these, you know, really expensive vegetables is going to go through the roof and...
Especially when they're not seasoned.
Especially when the kids aren't eating. That's a big folly is season or not, just kids not eating them. And dumping is a sin.
It's exactly what's going to happen. We were on SHAPE for at least five years. The whole time I've been here, we were on SHAPE. And the SHAPE program was an excellent program. And it was USDA-approved. And the best thing about the program was kids could pick and choose, and they could learn more. We had, for example, with the program we were on before, with SHAPE, you could actually... The menus were analyzed. So, diabetics know exactly what they can have and what they can't have. With the new traditional food base that we're going with, that's all off. This is what you have to have. There's nine breads a week for elementary school, 10 breads a week for whether you like it or not. That's what has to be served. So, there's a lot of changes.
Who knows, food allergies. The SHAPE program, I think, addressing a little bit.
Absolutely.
Is this addressing at all?
Going to a class on Fridays, I'd have to keep you posted on that. From what I've read, not really.
Yeah, because I just, I mean, I don't want to, you know, see some kid just go in and... No, really? There's a thing with peanut oil, and I had no idea that I had to eat it? That's odd.
So, we... I'm sorry. We've really disappointed that the USDA said no to SHAPE. There's about 160 schools in California that were on the SHAPE program last year that were successful in maintaining better quality products for the students and effectively doing salad bars and changes. And that's pretty much...
What brilliant minds in Washington brought this up. Certain lobbyists, I would imagine, in the food industry.
Steve?
The bigger ones.
Can we opt out of the feds? I mean, what is the hold on us?
Well, the biggest issue is you can't opt out of the National School Lunch Program.
What's that?
You cannot opt out of the National School Lunch Program. You have to provide free and reduced meals.
Even if you were to opt out of federal funding?
All federal funding?
Yeah.
I still think you're bound to the national food.
I know it would take a lot of work. If there's any way we can even halfway monitor how much gets thrown away, whether our schools put an empty lunch pail out at lunchtime and then... I don't know. Because you start telling parents how much stuff is being thrown away and how much money is being wasted. And you get parents ticked off, they can do more legislating.
Look, I would like to at least have this publicized so a local community can know that our program that we've developed and improved over these years is being stopped. And that if there is some way to express to our legislators our concern and irritation, I would imagine there are areas of the country where this will be a benefit because they don't have healthy foods available.
Other states.
I'm sure there are parts of the country that will benefit from this program. But there should be exceptions when you can demonstrate much better food options.
Prior to Ray taking over the program, we were on this old methodology of serving lunches. And, you know, we have data going back. How many garbage can liners we used to have to purchase. And we have testimonials from our custodians of how heavy those things were after lunch because things were just being thrown away. So, we believe that this is going to go right back to that and just complete waste. And if... Yeah, the guidelines are just very frustrating.
It's been a bit of a contradiction because the USDA... Based on the current law, USDA must allow any reasonable approach. And SHAPE far exceeds traditional food-based pattern. But the USDA is saying, if you don't do this, then we're going to come in next year, and then they can do what they do.
They're not... You'll be non-conpliant.
We'll be non-conpliant. And we just had our CRE in February, and we were excellent. Our program, everything, the financials, the meal patterns, everything is perfect. So, we did a great job on that. And I don't understand, I mean, we worked with... I talked to Mitch and Steve, and they brought this... I worked with a couple of people at UC Davis on some of the verbiage for the "any reasonable approach", but I guess it didn't pan out the way we wanted it to.
We tried a petition for them, and they denied us?
No.
Well, our consultants have been working... Our consultant has been working with USDA in Washington, trying to get them to agree on the options that we've used in the past. And they've said no.
And that's it? That's the final word? Who are the consultants to tell us what to feed our children?
Well, we have a consultant that helps us with our meal planning. And so, the consultant from UC Davis that we've used in the past to serve nutritional meals has been trying to convince... You know, she's trying to convince Washington that this is a more nutritional meal plan than that they've recommended. And they're saying, no, you have to use... But it's been approved.
And we have to be compliant until October 1st.
Right. Otherwise, they can withhold all of the...
All of our funds.
And we did get a substantial amount of funding, about over $1 million, to contribute to this program. So, we need the money.
Tough, because, you know, like I said, with SHAPE, it was so nice because everybody could look at the menus online, understand exactly what they were eating, no calorie count for anything.
Well, I feel like there needs to be at least a continued conversation with anybody.
I feel like we need to go around to our Congressperson and even our state legislature. Just allow the feds to bull rush us, and we're leaving. Well, that's why they're trying to work on school finance.
Right, yeah. That's not our budget, so...
I'd be happy to send you my original... I'd be happy to send you my original board presentation.
I'd love to see it. I think you've done a great job.
You can email it to all of us?
The name of it was "You Can Keep the Change", and I wanted to actually fight this, but I would love to fight it.
So, meanwhile, I would rat, as secretary to the Board of Letter, to our congresspeople and the USDA, asking them to reconsider.
Yeah, I would love to see that. So, I'll send you my old board presentation.
I think I probably still have it.
Okay, and you can forward it to everybody for me? That'd be great. And then they will fly right back there for a silent protest.
They'll be starving on the cowboy steps. Don't let this guy starve it down.
Sounds good.
I can hear it now. My child won't be able to... It probably wouldn't be silent, which is not a bad thing.
Well, thank you for that presentation, even though it's... Well, it's a lot of opening, it was quite a lot.
Thank you very much.
But it is helpful to know that we want your support.
100%.
And if we had any sort of budget flexibility, I would be happy to say we don't need the money. But I can't say that right now.
And the only way you can eat okra is if you deep fry it. My mother's southern, and it's the only way we eat okra.
One question before we let you go. How are you going to propose, maybe I haven't really thought up, the delta we're going to have between 25.40 and 6 cents? How are you thinking ahead, like giving us some ideas of how we could fill that gap?
What I did was I got ahold of a group called Premier. They only deal with mostly colleges like Stanford. And I piggybacked with them. So, even though we're really small, I negotiated with them to be able to...
Build efficiencies?
Yeah, so I can buy different... Right now, I'm buying, I would say, seven of my vendors I buy direct. And I just buy in bulk. I don't buy from... I can't buy from vendors at the markups. They've really marked it out. So, I just go directly to the CBOs of the companies and I say that this is... Especially with meat, because I was in the business for years of meat business. So, I remember, this is what we want, this is what we pay. And we've been pretty effective, but we're going to have to grind next year because I have to make up 20 cents a meal.
Yeah.
So, it's going to be a challenge, but I know with my staff and Mitch and Steve's support, that we'll do it. But aside from that, it's not as good of a plan as it would be. That's the frustrating part for me.
Yeah, it's the worst plan in the world.
It's never been tested, by the way, just so you guys know. It's never been tested. No, this is a brand-new thing. At least when they did SHAPE, they brought in, they tested it first, and it had proven results. This has no fast leader.
The other thing that, I mean, we have raised our prices because we actually, the meals that we do sell actually is on the brink. You know, keep the program in the black. But the only other alternative that we would have to that is going back to what we did before, which really created the very visible lines that we have now. And we doubt not do that.
We're so seamless with no a la carte. It's just everybody gets a meal deal. I've had students stank me when they see me. And that means a lot when I see the kids. They're nervous, especially the freshmen, because they don't know. And I'm like, you can send me wherever you want. And it's been a great system, the way we have it set up right now. And yeah, I could make money doing a la carte, that's what a lot of school districts do, but I don't want to make no money that way. I'll find different ways to make it.
How are we doing on the battle against the mobile food vendors?
Awesome.
Yeah, we got them out of their dumpster.
Good.
Yeah, and now they're all in front of the warehouse. Because they are.
Yeah, the construction and regency in the warehouse. There's some now that we're serving. The construction workers, as opposed to high schoolers, they have more money.
Yeah, so it's worked out great. So, that's been great.
Excellent. Now, when you are a paying student, what does your lunch cost?
This year, it'll be $3.75.
Okay, now, how much do we get for the free and reduced lunch? Free or reduced? Or we kind of compensate?
$2.39. And we run about 50% labor. Not a lot. We try to run center... We've really tried to focus on salad bar and center of the plate, nor the main entree, which is what we've really worked on. That's why we only use whole muscle. We don't use processed. We don't do corn dogs. We have no... Oh, that's our harm menu here. Yes, lovely. So, we've worked hard at that, and we're going to be quick. But yeah, it'll be good.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Okay. Item D, approval of the minutes of June 26, 2012. Some moves. Questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Do I have the comment cards from the public? Saying none, we will move on to item F, reported activities and correspondence of school board members. I have to send out my list, but I would imagine it's been quiet. There was a graduation on...
13.
Yes, and it's not the way to be the actual district activity. School started, though.
Mary Collins started it. Yep. Pink over tomorrow, last week?
Yep.
And pink tomorrow.
That's right. And then I received information from Babs Kavanaugh that CSBA is offering a free governance conversation opportunity where we can talk about student health and wellness. And it would mean that we would be able to invite people to, given this food situation. But it covers a variety of topics. So, I wanted to find out from you all if you would be interested. The date of consideration is a Tuesday, October 7, I think was the date that we were thinking about, so...
Tuesday day?
Night.
No.
An evening.
6 to 9.
Yeah. So, I figured that it's certainly something that we have worked on over the years to improve the district and...
We're talking about the total enrollment of student loans.
Correct, not just food.
Right.
So, I'm ready. Okay? Yeah, I think that's a good idea. All right, thank you. Item G, approval of the consent agenda by consolidated motion. Some moves.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Under Administration and Human Resources, our first hold item is our employment report. Recommended motion that the employment report be approved. Some moves.
Second.
And I think we have somebody to...
Jason's going to do the introduction.
So... It is my pleasure to formally introduce to the board Amy Fadegi as the new principal of Penrose Elementary School. Amy comes to us from Ross Valley School District, where she had been a second-grade teacher at Berkside Upper Elementary School. And prior to her tenure at Berkside, Amy taught at Hutchins Elementary School in Mobile, Alabama. At Berkside, Amy served in a variety of positions, including the administrative designee and site council and all kinds of different things. She also was a grade-level team leader on the Ross Valley Math Curriculum Committee, which is significant because Ross Valley has been mirroring Petaluma City Schools on their math committee. We're working with the same consultant of scope. And so, we've been kind of working on the same ideas. Amy has a bachelor's degree in liberal studies with a minor in Spanish. Yes, she does speak Spanish, although she's working on it, she says, from Cal Poly San Luis Obispo. And her master's degree in educational administration and leadership from University of Southern Mississippi. She also has a global perspective because of her volunteer work in both Nigeria and Mexico. She lives in San Rafael with her husband of five years, Keno. And they love to travel and enjoy boating. They spend a lot of their free time volunteering for various charity organizations. And I can tell you, I was overhearing some teachers today talking about, "Did you meet the new principal, Andrew? I really think I'm going to like her. I am so excited to be working with her." So, Amy, welcome to Petaluma City Schools.
Thank you. I'm so glad to be here. So, we start school tomorrow, that's the school night the day after. So, we're really busy, and it's a great time. It's exciting. So, thank you for that.
We have a back-to-school line on Thursday?
For K and 1st, and then 2nd through 6th the following Thursday. Thank you. Thanks. Yeah. Great first show. I know.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. We have several first readings on amended board policies if anybody wishes to discuss them. Item 7, the Williams Settlement Court of Uniform Complaint Report Summary. I'm happy to report there were no complaints. I have to officially say that. Okay. Item 8, discussion. The district consolidation study wanted to make public, in case of yours at home haven't heard, that the Old Adobe Union School District requested that the consolidation study, which we had asked the county office of education to conduct a study, they asked to stop it based on changes in their financial makeup. So, I just wanted to make sure people were aware of that. It would have been nice to get information to compare. So, I thought that was important.
Just to make the point that the "we" was the Old Adobe Board and the Petaluma City School Boards requested the study. It wasn't Petaluma City Schools.
Right. And I have to say, it was at the initiation of Old Adobe Schools, they asked us if we would be interested, and we said yes. And then they changed their minds. So, just wanted to make sure that that was publicly brought to the attention of our community. Any discussion? No. Okay, some information items. Under Business Services, I think our first hold item is item 9. Did I miss one? Resolution 121301. Recommended motion that Resolution 121301 of the Board of Education of the Petaluma City Elementary and Joint Union High School Districts authorizing signatory for budget transfers of funds be adopted. Some moves.
Second.
This is a standard resolution every year indicating who is authorized to sign the budget transfers.
As budgets change?
Yes.
Okay. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item 10. An agreement authorization recommended motion that the Board authorize the agreement with Unbounded Ambition Films for a short film at Petaluma High School. Some moves. Second.
Okay. This is a little local group who is interested in doing a short little film. It's going to be introduced, I think, at the International Film Festival, possibly. And just a coming-of-age, about two boys. One's going off to college, and one's becoming a senior at high school. So, it's a nice little script, and that's been shared with you. Looks appropriate.
And it's being filmed before school starts?
Yes.
Okay, so there won't be any interruption with... Okay. And they're paying the usual fees to facilities use?
Yes.
Will the name actually... Will Petaluma High School name be in the film? Or is it called something else? Is there any...
It doesn't have the Petaluma City Schools name. They're using Petaluma High School. The PE coach's room, or PE teacher room, classroom, the quad, and the multi.
I mean, is the movie set in Petaluma, at Petaluma High School?
It doesn't say so in the script. It just talks about the older son going to Berkeley.
I guess the only question is the brisque of some, what turns out to be sort of inappropriate in other people's eyes, movie with our name in it.
Yeah, and that's the reason for getting the script before the movie so that we can determine... And that's part of our policy, that before we approve a film being shot on campus, that we have the opportunity to review the script.
Well, if I can make a suggestion, you want an opportunity to review the master tape or CD or whatever, the master computer file to Tro's point. That way, it is pretty standard, and they shouldn't have any problems about it. You look at it, and they may... You look at it and they may morph that script a little bit or there may be any windows that you think, you know what, that's great that you did that, but we don't want our name anywhere near it. And you can ask them and they can just scrub identifying information. It may just, you know, the Trojan PHS logo maybe in the back of the gym there that you may just think, you know what, we just don't want that out there because it's up to us to protect that. Okay, that's kind of our proprietary intellectual property. So Mitch, if you just, one of you just take the responsibility, just say, look, we just want to look at and we'll, and just write it in the agreement that we have the right to pre-approve. And you're not editing for content, you're just basically protecting our name. And that's very common.
We can follow up and do that.
I just have a quick question.
Yeah.
I don't know, I moved backwards, but I just noticed something when I was reading this. Eight under business service was a consent.
Oh, I'm sorry. I meant nine. Thank you.
No, no, eight was a consent, but there's a hold piece in the.
Oh.
This is your agreement with, I think, isn't it?
School facilities consultants.
Does it have to be a hold for any reason? I just asked to make sure it doesn't have to be.
No, on the item in the back, it indicates that's a hold.
Well, I have documented, if you go to page 54, it says hold. I just wanted to make sure it didn't have to be a hold.
No, it does not have to be a hold. That was an oversight.
You have a consent agenda.
It's fine, that's on the, so I just wanted to make sure it didn't have to be.
Great. Thank you. Okay, so back to item 10. Any further questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Can I take the comment?
Yes.
You know, about four or five years ago, there was a commercial being filmed here in Petaluma, and it was for Toyota. And they came to the Little League and they wanted a Little League team to go out and do it. And they gave us a donation and we did it in the Near Park, I think. And I don't know, they'll never show it here, but they'll show it somewhere. But I was talking to, there's people that do this location spotting. And it's a very small community apparently of people. And it was interesting to talk to this person who said, the Petaluma used to just be the place because it was so user-friendly. And if you've noticed, it's not the place anymore. This was, like I say, about five years ago. And so, I mean, anything that we can do to make it user-friendly, because the money is big. But I guess it's run through the city for city stuff. I don't know if you have to go to the city.
They have to have a city permit to film in the city.
Yeah, and the comment was, man, this used to be the greatest place in the world to film everything. And this guy was saying, you know, I only came here because it was a quick one and I needed to get it done and I knew the facility because I wouldn't necessarily come back. So, I mean, anything that we can do to make it, because that's, it's a big deal for us. Just a point.
Thank you. Okay, future business, calendar of activities for board members' consideration and agenda items for our next meeting. The next meeting will be held here at 6:00 PM.
Did you jump over 11?
It's a discussion, I think.
Okay, sorry.
And that's discussion, yeah.
Okay.
Unless you wish to discuss it.
No, no, I almost had it.
So our next meeting is here on August 14 at 6:00 PM. Upcoming events, we already said tomorrow's first day of school at Pen Grove. Tomorrow night is back-to-school night at Mary Collins. Thursday is K1 and then next, a week from Thursday is, is that a week from Thursday or a week from Wednesday? The second. Yeah, a week from Thursday is the Pen Grove back-to-school night for the rest of the next morning. Oh, and also just a reminder that the PEF fundraiser, the BASH, is September 8.
Can I just ask if anyone is not going to be here on the 14th? We'd like to plan a last minute vacation. I just want to make sure before we do it that we have a call.
How much does it work to you? Where are we going?
It's Vegas, Disneyland. We have to fight my kids for it.
Everybody's got to do with their kids. I'll be here. I'll be there. Sounds like we have a court.
All right, thank you.
The, one thing on the upcoming events to note though is that the Mary Collins back-to-school night is not the 25th. The primary grades is this evening and on Thursday, the 26th, is the upper grades.
Oh, okay.
Get a good day right in the middle of that.
And then, so on Pen Grove, you heard from Amy that tomorrow night will be primary and the second will be upper grades.
Thursday.
Thursday.
Yeah.
Yeah, excuse me, Thursday and Thursday.
Okay. Okay, and classes start the traditional calendar on the 26th. All right, so we are going to adjourn to closed session. Thank you.